Oh yay, I always like when a public joins because then I know everything's okay.
I'll be right back, Deborah. I gotta find my.
Okay, that's fine. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll put on mute for now.
Okay.
Muchers, President Lopez is on, but if Justin is on, I just want to make sure that he's displaying the slideshow, the slide deck.
Deborah is actually going to be leading a slideshow. Judson's off this evening.
So I have, I have everything ready and I have all the other attachments from the last meeting. So if you need to refer to those, just let me know and I can open them or share them.
I think I'm good. I think it's really about desired characteristics. Thank you.
Okay. Hello. Hi. Oh, hi Commissioner.
Let's just wait a couple more minutes. I think we have a quorum, but let's just get started in about a minute.
Do you want me to go ahead with the interpretation stuff?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm going to.
Recording in progress.
SFUSD will provide interpretation throughout today's board meeting. For Chinese interpretation, please call 1-484-854-3328 and use the PIN 721609895. I'm sorry, I can't see it. Five. For Spanish interpretation, please call 1-319-383-9676 and use the PIN 665996976. Can I have that translated in Chinese and Spanish, please? Thank you Rita, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Buenas tardes, el Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco proporciona servicios gratuitos de interpretación para las personas que lo necesiten. Si necesita servicio puede llamar este número de Google Meet. 1-319-3829676 con el código de acceso 665996976 con el símbolo de número al final. Gracias.
Thank you so much to our interpreters. Good evening to the public and to staff and commissioners. I'd like to call to order the special meeting on the desired characteristics of the next superintendent. Today is Thursday, January 27th. And for general information, you'll see listed under Board Docs a notice of virtual meeting. Number two, the ADA accommodation and translation services. Which now brings us to item B, which is the Special Order of Business. The desired characteristics of next superintendent. And actually, before I bring up our presenters for this agenda item, Deborah, please just acknowledge the commissioners that are present, including student delegate Lam.
Okay, we'll do it Commissioner.
Thank you. And I'll just do a bit of an opening to ground us for our work ahead this evening as commissioners. What we want to be able to take away from tonight's meeting is really solidifying both the core concepts of the desired characteristics of our next superintendent. And why that's important is that this will provide the foundation around, you know, the characteristics and what we're looking for in our next superintendent. And that will complement the application process, which we know is going to be forthcoming as far as the when applications will need to be submitted by Friday, February 18th, is what we have stated right now. And so with that, tonight, we will not be wordsmithing. But again, really reviewing the four key leadership skillsets. And we will open up for the dialogue with commissioners and bring forward that those discussion points and feedback. And I know that some of the pre-work has been asked to commissioners to go forward this evening. So with that, and you know, if there are minor edits, then we will look to, you know, having a approval. If the discussion goes that it requires, you know, further substantial, then you know, we can look at what those options are, but certainly it is imperative that we finalize them. The sooner we finalize them, the more information and comprehensive roadmap that we give our candidates that are considering to applying. So I want to really stress how important it is to get this document finalized. And Hank, I hope I teed that up for you, for HYA and the team here around, you know, what's important and what's really on task for the board this evening. So with that, I'd like to call up Hank Jometro from HYA and the colleagues from HYA to present.
Martha, are you there?
I was, I was muted. Sorry about that. Thank you, Vice President Lam. Our lead, Hank Jometro, is not able to join us today. He had a family emergency. And so he would have never missed this meeting unless it was something that was truly an emergency. So we're here. And Glenn and I are going to do the presentation. So if you could put the slideshow up, that would be great. We're going to start today, again, as Vice President Lam spoke to the agendas, really to look at these desired characteristics. You saw the leadership profile report on Tuesday. We had lots of discussion around that. And hopefully you've had more time to kind of just digest and process the documents that were reviewed on Friday that lead in to these four characteristics. So we'll go to the second slide. We'll just jump right in. So there were four identified characteristics. And again, this was in alignment also with the survey results. And those are the four areas that we're going to just spend a little bit of time talking about tonight. Again, it's not really towards myth. Is there, the purpose of tonight is really to see that we leave something out. If there's a small edits, we can certainly take those and we'll be taking notes and on any of your discussion items. And as Vice President Lam said, we will take this back to probably the leadership team to kind of come back and get this. But it is an imperative task tonight. The sooner you get this decided upon, the faster we'll be able to really bring quality, the highest quality of candidates to your table because this is what will guide their application process. This is what will guide the match to the best leader that you can have for San Francisco Unified. So the four identified skillsets were a systems thinker that is really, really focused on instructional quality and results. And I'll go deeper into what that really means in terms of some of the bullets that we pulled out of that. We want, over and over again, San Francisco is so proud of their efforts and how much they value cultural proficiency, but also just the efforts that have been put into racial equity and social justice and all of those things that follow that. So it was loud and clear that we would want a passionate champion that will carry that forward, but also would expand that to a new level. And then again, communication was this huge piece. I hope you've had some time to look at the appendices that were attached to the report. And almost in every group that we interviewed, communication was a concern. So you really want to be able to find somebody who's effective communicator and then again, the relationship builder. And then of course, on the operational side and of course, on the academic side, but certainly you want that a highly effective and engaged manager. So I will take the first slide around systems thinker with a laser focus on quality, instructional quality and results. And as we, as you heard on Tuesday, and again, I just want to preface, I think, you know, it's the moment we're in. It's the time that's passed in the last year and a half that may really have lended to such a strong emphasis that instructional excellence has been missing. And so there needs to be a leader who can lead that effort to bring you back to the place where organizational excellence is also in place. Has the ability to really influence the culture at the organizational level and penetrate through all stakeholder groups, both internal and external, who can really look at some policy changes maybe that need to be made. And certainly those practices and strategies are going to be able to achieve those results. The second bullet talks about a track record, a proven track record, somebody who's had experience in closing the achievement gap. And, you know, we appreciated Commissioner Collins, your comment about the opportunity gap. And, you know, I kind of favor that word, but this was really focused on academic gains. It was really talking about that achievement from students of all subgroups and they're listed there. So I'm not going to read them to you. But every subgroup was of importance to the stakeholders from which we interviewed. Looking for, again, that balance, that tight looseness around what this would look like. While we want a set of guiding principles of how this laser focus on instructional quality transpires, there was also very much the sentiment that they wanted autonomy in how that happens and rolls out at the site level. So again, we refer to it as flexibility and, you know, the science of instruction and teaching and learning happens at a district level, but the art of how that gets carried out happens at a site level with the teachers in the classroom. And of course, the site administration, you know, having the voice to lead their schools and how they feel best to carry out those goals and reach those results that are, that are set forward by the district. And again, over and over again, we heard how Vision 25 was right on track of where San Francisco Unified needed to be. But the implementation was lacking in terms of the, you know, kind of the how, how they can really be realized and actualized at the site level. So I'll stop there. I think we're going to stop with each, each one of those four areas and we'll take comments, questions. And Glenn, please feel free to jump in and help me here. So I'm taking notes also. So thank you for having the slideshow up. It means one less thing we have to manage. We'll take notes and, and work through any ideas that you may have.
Great. Thank you Martha. Deborah, we can stop sharing or at least that way we can see participants and maybe not spotlight. Let's see. Bear with me all for just. Give me just a second. I'm actually going to take public comment at this time before we dive into our discussion. So Deborah, could you please see how many public comments we have, please?
If we'd like to speak to this, this page of the slide, can you please raise your hand and can I have that translated, please?
Let's do two minutes, Deborah.
Okay. Meredith? Meredith?
Hi. Hi, thank you. Wasn't expected to get called on so quickly. So my name is Meredith Dodson, the Executive Director of San Francisco Parent Coalition. I was just calling in, thank you to the search firm for this presentation and the one on Tuesday. I was just calling in as I know we've, I know we've advanced, then sped up the timeline for the search process. And I'm wondering why that's happening, given that I know when I apply for jobs, I tend to want to know who my bosses, my boss or bosses are going to be. And I think that's a very important aspect of attracting the best, you know, highest quality candidates. So I'm interested in hearing more from the search firm about that, if any of the board commissioners or if any of the board commissioners could speak to that. I think it's an issue that we should be taking seriously. Thank you.
I guess I can respond in terms of the contract and in terms of how, so the process from which the search firm engages in is we did a presentation, I want to say it was late September or first week of October. We were selected. We started meeting with the board in November. We had planning meetings, the dates were set. And then, you know, the motion begins. And so these dates, in fact, when, when we say that the, that the search has been shortened, it's been lengthened in terms of what we propose on a timeline and what was accepted. And that is just kind of a give and take between the board and, you know, what's bidding for them. And we're trying to be as flexible as we can, but.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, sorry Martha, we can't respond to public comments. So I should have stepped in there. So excuse me. So Deborah.
That's right.
Let's move on to the following public commenters, please.
Habba?
Yes, I have two things. The first is, I don't know, I mean, this is the first step. And then you'll have candidate pools and I'm just wondering if that would be a transparent process or you would narrow it down. These are the type of things that I'm wondering, you know, at some point, when do parents, teachers, et cetera, can they be a part of the process on some level as things unfold as far as the candidates? And then the other one is, the other night, I felt we kind of got lost a little bit on social justice and other things that were going on. And the first one, which is laser focus on instructional and curriculum, I think is very, very important. And it's important because it really ties into multiple areas of concern. There's communication concerns, there's management concerns, there's breakdowns on who is supposed to be doing what, how parents are supposed to understand the information, how educators are supposed to understand the information. And as a parent who has been observing and also working with advisory committees and trying to connect with educators, administrators, going to BOE meetings, I can say that there are several things that come out. The first is, yeah, there is no cohesive mandate. So I think it's very important that both parents and educators have some sort of consistent cohesive curriculum guidelines in reading, writing and math as a bare minimum. That is then still, that autonomy piece is still very, very crucial. The creativity is still very crucial. However, without that basic guideline, we have inconsistency. And I can say that that's not just school to school, that's grade to grade, teacher to teacher. And my son has missed core curriculum because the curriculum guidelines are not spelled out. So please focus on this and care about it as much as we care about everything else. It's so important that was mentioned the other night. Thank you so much.
Patrick?
Hi, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So Patrick Wolf, Executive Director of Families for San Francisco. And two things I want to say. First, I just really want to praise the firm for the work you've done. I thought the report, the several reports that you produced were really impressive, a lot of great information. So just thank you very much. The second point I want to make, it's both to the search firm, but also to the board, which is that I think it is extremely important to respect the results of the election that is taking place right now with the vote that's taking place right now. So I realize this is kind of an unprecedented situation, but in three weeks, basically one of two things will happen. Either the three commissioners who are up for recall will be affirmed by the voters, in which case essentially they'll have a mandate. Or the voters will have spoken and expressed their will for the commissioners to leave their jobs. But there'll still be a several week period that it may take for that election result to be certified. And I think it would be deeply problematic. And I'm just going to say literally from the perspective of respecting our democratic institutions, I think it would be deeply problematic to take actions at that point that would in some way tie the hands of whoever will end up being replacement commissioners. So I just really want to urge that in that February 15th period to whatever period of time it takes afterwards, to respect whatever the result of the vote of the people is. Thank you very much.
That's it Commissioner.
Thank you for that public comment. And before I formally close public comment, I just want to note that this is public comment for the one agenda item and I will not be breaking it up for, you know, for the rest of the presentation because this is really an important working session for the board and our task at hand, which is to finalize this desired characteristic. So with that, I just want to do, Deborah, one more call out to attendees so they know that this will be the only time I'll be taking public comment.
After the whole presentation, will you, or just this one time you did?
Just this, because I'm sorry Martha, have you finished or were you going to continue on?
No, there's, there's two, there's this deck and then there's another deck. So after the presentations, we can do public comment. But I think she wanted commissioners to ask questions as we went along. Correct?
May I suggest, because you're taking public comment, you know, after each slide, then maybe we should complete the entire presentation, take the public comments and then come back and we can look at each slide individually. That might work faster.
Yeah, that's my preference. I really want to streamline both that discussion with board members.
Okay, so Glenn, slide two.
Yes. So the second major point is a passionate champion for social justice. So we want this person to make, we want to make sure that these candidates understand the issues related to diversity, equity and inclusion. And hopefully they have a great track record where they've shown significant progress in these areas in, in the work that they're currently doing. We'd also like it to be equitable and inclusive as they, they work with the entire student population of the district. Next, we want this person to show that he or she is aware of and has the ability to address elements of institutional racism in organizational policies and practices. And based upon my, the meetings I had, the interviews I had with individuals and groups, I want to add that we put the word racism in there and that is significant. But there was an even broader group that included, for example, the Jewish community. So I'd like you to be aware that we're talking about many minority groups within there. And then the third one, we'd like the candidate to proactively engage with all communities within San Francisco and understand the needs and issues of each of those communities. Because although San Francisco is a community, there are many smaller communities within San Francisco. And we learned that from our meetings. Martha?
Great. The next slide is about becoming an effective communicator and a relationship builder. And I think interwoven throughout each one of these bullets is the element of trust, transparency, authenticity. And I think at whatever level we look at these bullets, that's kind of the resounding theme that you'll, kind of the common thread that you'll see woven in here. So it's really about developing those deep relationships with all of your internal and external stakeholders, specifically city. We talked about the county and the state and even, you know, we heard loud and clear that they want a leader who's not afraid to go to Sacramento to show that, that San Francisco is a district that needs to be heard, an important district within our state. So that is, you know, serving such a diverse population, I think that voice needs to be heard. I mean, I didn't say that stakeholders, that voice needs to be heard throughout, but in a, in a way that has an interdependence across internal and external stakeholders. And again, talked about the union, your labor partners and how they would love to increase honesty and sincere involvement that would lead to shared decision making. There is, again, there was a resounding theme about the wealth of resources, not only that the CBOs bring, but that is, that is maybe not even be tapped upon within San Francisco so that the new leader would be building those relationships to sustain the partnerships that you have right now with your CBOs, but also expand those to other entities that really might be within your reach of really supporting the district. And then this one, I think is extremely important that you would develop a community, a community communication strategy that is really looking for authentic engagement, that, that all of your stakeholders feel is, is leading to greater levels of transparency and honesty. So that's pretty much that. And I will let Glenn finish it off.
Okay. So then the, the last point. Okay, so then the, the last point is the, an engaged manager. So the impression we were getting is the community wants this superintendent to roll up his or her sleeves and get into the work that needs to be done. The person needs to have a foundation in educational finance here in California. Have a good comprehensive understanding of what a financial plan should look like and, and advocates for any state and federal changes that would support the work in San Francisco or would not work against it. Secondly, the superintendent should carefully assess and redesign the district leadership structure to support the work that's needed in order to move toward realizing Vision 2025. And the final point here is the superintendent should work to attract, support, retain and inspire a highly effective workforce. That word inspired came up in many different ways through our, our talks with community members. Martha?
I would suggest that we go back to the second slide where it has all of the four characteristics on there. And then Vice President Lam would like to take it from there so that the audience can see all four as they respond in public comment.
Yes, and Martha, just so I make sure I'm staying on point. I also know that I had asked Hank about the timeline. Do we have a slide for that as well?
You want to go?
No, well, let's just hold that for, before we conclude so we can really have our discussion land on, you know, where we're at with the characteristics, then close with that timeline. So then we can reaffirm to the public kind of what the roadmap looks like ahead. So in the timeline ahead.
So could we move to the slide prior to this one? That has the four characteristics on it. The second, it's the second slide in the slide deck. There we go.
That concludes Martha and Glenn, right? Correct for this?
For this, for this portion, yes.
Okay, so at this time, I'm just sorry I had a little scuffle there, but let's take public comment and that will be public comment for the entire item. And please, if it's for speakers who have not spoken already during public comment.
Okay, if you, if you want to speak to this presentation, can you please raise your hand? Can I have that translated in Chinese and Spanish, please? Seeing two hands, Commissioner.
Let's do the same timing as before, two minutes, please, per speaker.
Josephine?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, uh, so I think that these are very good measures. But from our, you know, we have talked to many community parents in our community. The biggest concern we have right now is the financial wellbeing of the school district. And I don't see that being listed as part of it. And, and also in 170 years of our history, we, we never had a Asian superintendent. So it'd be great that if we can consider that for this, for this round. And I think we are on the verge of being taken over by the state. Someone needs to really be able to turn that around by understanding the financial structure, the structural deficit, as well as why our school district is not able to retain families. Thank you.
Selena?
Hello, hi, thank you so much for having, having me for this meeting tonight. So I want to also echo the fact that I do hear a lot of parents are concerned about the financial of our school district. Because we, we were literally like less than one day away from state takeover. So they wanted to, they, they, they let me know that, you know, what they want is a person who does have a very strong financial understanding and financial work can manage or hire someone to do the financial so that way we don't, we don't run into this type of issue for this, for this coming year. And also, I think also for, for, for someone to be very inclusive, to understand the struggles of many, you know, many different communities within San Francisco. That's also a key that was brought to me. They, they wanted to see that in the new superintendent. I think, I think especially for, because I am working with some non-English speakers and the parents, they, they have, they have raised the fact that they felt like their voice weren't, you know, heard in the past and they want someone who can actually do go out and meet these individual, meet these parents who, who you, you know, willing to, willing to actually use interpreter or use any other way to speak to these community who usually have no voice and, you know, they, they hope to see that in the new superintendent who's more hands-on and who will go out. And even if they don't speak English.
Chanelle?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm having technical difficulties. I apologize if I get going in and out. Thank you. And this is really, I really like the format. How you're doing is, is really good and I appreciate that. But my concern is, is that I have, you sped up the process. If anything, it should be slowed down. Any candidates for this position, especially if they are good, will want to know who their bosses are. With the recall coming up, it makes things very complicated. I, I just believe that the, the process should be slowed down, not speed up. That is my concern. Thank you for your service. For our kids.
Thank you. Lawrence?
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Thank you so much for this meeting, all the work prior and taking our public comments. I think that these four items are super important. What springs out to me in a lot of the report documents is a need for trust. A need for trust in the superintendent in terms of showing how the district will work according to laws. Showing how the district will be, should be sharing how the, the funding of the district will be fair and right and appropriate. And also a superintendent that they can trust can work with all the disparate groups that are currently very antagonistic to completely change the culture where it can be someplace where people can contribute and not feel that their voices are going to be diminished. Thank you.
I think that's it, Commissioner, unless I missed somebody. I
Okay, thank you.
I think that's it.
And thank you to Oliver Public Comment. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to Commissioner discussions. And if I could just ask my colleagues, let's go ahead and just do initial, you know, discussion around per of the, each of the four areas. So we'll start with any reactions, thoughts around the systems, the first key leadership skill or, actually, let me pause before we go diving into each of the specific leadership skill set. I know we had a discussion Tuesday night, but I will also ask my colleagues if you have some, any opening comments that will contribute towards our discussion tonight and landing again on the final attributes for putting forward to our next superintendent. Commissioner Bogus.
I'm not sure if I, if I have a comment in regards to that. I think it was maybe more of a clarifying question in regard to the leadership skill sets. Just really hoping to get an understanding from the search team about like, how, how do you make those measurable? When you're like looking for candidates and how will we kind of see those kind of brought back for us? Like, how are we going to have, like, how are we, how was the demonstration of closing gap? Something that you're able to kind of see through your search process and bring back? Or is it more so finding someone who has like a commitment to those things? Versus kind of like a, a track record? Or, yeah, I guess kind of how you, you gauge the things that are harder to kind of track that are kind of a, a part of this skill set? Or how we should gauge what you bring back to us to, to be able to do those things?
So these are a lens for us as we seek applicants. And a lens for you as you start beginning looking at the applications or as you go through the applications and interview candidates. As far as trying to quantify these, I think comes down to judgment. Based upon what you see in the application, the proven record of the individual candidates in the current positions and maybe previous positions, what they've accomplished. Have they been able to make a difference, for example, in, in closing the achievement gap, as you pointed out? They, they are measurable to that extent. As far as trying to quantify numerically, really not very practical. Martha, you have something?
Well, I was just going to say exactly what you said. A lot of these, you know, we're looking for candidates who have experience in balancing budgets, who have taken their district out of a financial crisis and, and have, you know, two or three years or maybe even five years where that financial, you know, where their reserves have been able to really been built up over time after they have faced, you know, some kind of a financial. But there's, it, there's many, many ways that you can delve deep to see if these, if the individuals have this. One of the things that I would say though, in terms of the personal attributes, when you're looking at trust, transparency, honesty and authenticity and all of those other adjectives that come, you know, when you're looking for that type of a leader, who, who really is that relationship builder? I think that comes out in a lot of our reference checks. And as we get to the finalists is really digging deep and spending a lot of time really looking at the evidence pieces that can lead us to find and recommend, you know, those candidates who have these attributes. So that's all I would add.
Maybe going on that thread, Martha and Glenn, to Commissioner Bogus's question is that, you know, maybe walking us through from the application where the candidate will have to, you know, demonstrate through meeting these key leadership skills to then what perhaps may be through the, let me say, review process between HYA and then bringing those candidates forwards, for example, to the first round. Maybe you can just give a little bit more detail there.
We can, but that's on the second slide deck with the next step. So I'm not sure if we want to deviate right now from the desired characteristics. And I mean, we can certainly do that if that's where you want to go, but.
That's right. And so Commissioner Bogus, just to then, let's hold that, if that's okay, for the process and kind of the next steps there.
One of the things I didn't say when we opened this up is these characteristics are looking at 25,000 foot level. They're not looking at the very specific activities or strategies that this person is going to employ. So when we are writing these, we're thinking of a much higher level and those other things happen underneath that. And so again, it's, it's a much higher of the big picture kind of view of the, of the person that you're looking for, the leader that we're looking for, rather than kind of getting way down at the, you know, thousand footer, the 10, 5,000 foot level of what that would look like. And so I just wanted to make sure that that is kind of resonating with you as you're thinking about these bullets that are underneath these four areas.
Commissioner Maliga?
Martha, HYA for the presentation. I, I wanted to dig a little bit into the piece around the financing and the budget. And Martha, I think you, I think you mentioned it briefly as you were commenting on Commissioner Bogus's question. Can you talk a little bit more because about that? Because for me, you know, when I, when I imagine this piece around financial, financial expertise. Yes, financial, educational finance laws, right? You know, but I'm curious to, to know what your, you know, thinking is or what your explanation is around this piece of comprehensive financial health plan, right? Like for me, you know, I'm, I'm looking for someone who's, who's coming in here and understands the system in a way that is, wants to be able to, to readjust it so that we could be on a financial, a stable path, you know, everything from contracts to MOUs to, you know, the funding streams that we come, that we have in, in addition to the current funding formulas that we have, right? So when I, when I, when I'm imagining, you know, a person with that financial expertise background, that, that's what I'm thinking in my head. And maybe it's part of what you've included already, but I, the language to me is not popping out. So just, just curious to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, you're exactly right. So usually when you have a new leader, they're going to assess the finances of the district. They're going to look at not just the currents, your current status, but they're going to be looking at the out years. How are you going to be healthy three years from now, four years from now, five years from now? And that will be what we're, when you talk about that, something that's going to clearly define that. And that comprehensive health plan has to be part of how your financial outlook is going to grow. In the second bullet, I'm, I'm referring now to the engaged manager, which doesn't talk, even though it's talking about the fiscal side of the house, it's not, you know, really captured when it says engaged manager in the top. But it says assesses, carefully assesses and redesigns the district leadership structure. So in that assessment, you know, of the financial health, and we heard this over and over again. And this is where I'm saying this is like at the 20,000 foot level. But we knew and we heard that the structure of the central office needs to be reevaluated, needs to be assessed. We heard over and over again that resources need to be channeled down at the site level so that in order to meet the first bullet about the instructional quality and the excellence, academic excellence, there's going to have to be that redesigning, that whole reevaluation, the assessment piece that's, that is tied in and integrated so closely with the fiscal side. And so you've seen this over and over again, you know, we've seen different, I'll just use school services who can come in and does a financial audit and just says, hey, you know, you're top heavy here, you're down here. This is really missing, but you know, a good, strong leader will come in with a, again, the big concept of what needs to happen and, you know, what I find is that while we did the leadership profile, there's a, a, a wealth of knowledge in that report that should be guiding your new leader around all, because when you look at the appendices, you can see that it goes down, way down in the weeds, right? But what I just explained was some of that, you know, you got to look at the site levels, you got to see what that looks like. You've got to reexamine the district level organization. These bullets are just looking at it from that 30,000 viewpoint. I don't, I hope I'm giving you some clarity around how these areas, when we're talking about, I think, any strong educational leader, especially when you're looking at the caliber of candidate that would be applying, you know, for a national search for San Francisco, they're going to understand what this means. And they're going to have researched, they're going to know the fiscal status of, of San Francisco, they're going to understand that. I mean, you know, it's, it's going to be pretty simple. There's nobody going to come into this interview process without having done a lot of homework and a lot of research. So these bullets will clearly make sense to them. So, and that's what we're trying to get is it making sense to you? So that we can then inform the candidates that this is what you're really looking at. And again, those appendices have all the nitty gritty kinds of stuff that they can filter through.
Yeah, that was excellent. Yeah, I appreciate that. And, you know, I think it's a it's clear, you know, just kind of hearing it, seeing it on paper, having you explain it. I think it's a it's better for me in terms of like, understanding wise, and I hope that was, you know, helpful for folks tuning in as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Alexander.
Thank you, Vice President Lamb. And just picking up on on following on Commissioner Malaga's point or correction and Martha's point there. I think that this is an excellent document that does a great job of really summarizing kind of where we're at. Well, the whole report, I think it needs to be taken with the report that, as you just said, Martha, I think the report sort of then informs these leadership skill sets. And I think you've already done, you know, a piece of what a good superintendent will do when they come in, which is listen, right? And start assessing in a deeper way where the district is at, but you've already begun that work for her or him, and I think for them. And I think that's really, so kudos, I would say, I think this is just in a very short time timeline. I understand there were some little hiccups with the process and, you know, there's, I'm sure I we've heard from the public, there are areas where somebody might want to emphasize more. And, you know, I I have the same feeling I have, but all my comments are very, very micro. So, you know, I said, well, we should add local funding as well as state and federal in the first bullet on the fourth section. Or we should specifically say community schools when referring to CBOs, because that's how we approach. So but those are to me are all just little. So I made some edit suggestions, which I which I said to the to Hank, but and to Vice President Lamb. But but really, I'm I love this. And so I don't, I think it's, I think it's a really great 10,000 foot, as you said, I think you said 10, 20, whatever, however many feet that was, the high level, the high level vision, I think you all have captured really, really well. And so I fully, fully support and endorse this. And I think it, I think it works, it works really well at that level. And then, like you said, there's lots of little details which we all could could talk about for long periods of time. But as as Vice President Lamb said, I think we also just need to kind of agree on this tonight and get unless I I would be curious if any of my colleagues have big issues with it or think there are things that aren't reflected. Again, I think there are places where I might want to have deeper emphasis or things like that, which I think maybe we all might might think that. But I think it's, I think overall, it really it really captures the essence of of what we need.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander, and thanks for sticking with my trying to keep us at the high level. And then we'll go more drill down in each of the leaderships, leadership skill set areas. I appreciate that. So I'll go back. Actually, I'll have Commissioner Sanchez.
Oh, thank you, Vice President Lamb. Apropos to the comments Commissioner Alexander just made, I, you know, wanting to know what the rest of the commissioners might feel. I am totally in support of the four key leadership skill sets. I think that HYA has done an excellent job with our communities and tying everything together for us. I think it's great. I mean, I'm wondering if there is this unicorn candidate who had all of these leadership skill sets to T. We shall see, but I agree with the the skill sets that you've distilled here for us.
Commissioner Bogus, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I was curious, how similar are these skill sets to skill sets from other districts? That are that are kind of doing searches and just like, like, are these unique and different? Are these really similar? Just kind of, I guess, to get a kind of feel for for kind of how this sits in the the rest of the searches for superintendents that exist.
I wish Hank was here because he's done a lot more searches than I have.
Yeah.
I have been around long enough to tell you, this is contextual. Because if you look at what's underlining each one of these, there are many districts, and you heard us say this on Tuesday, who are not champions for social justice, they're just not there. And we know that San Francisco Unified is is there, it's just how are we going to, you know, unify this purpose? You know, the principles, the the values that you have is so deeply seated in what you do and how you do your work. And so that's not true of every district. Not every district is in financial disarray, you know, they're just not there, you know. So you you're looking at these characteristics in terms of the context of your district. And I do think that, of course, there are some characteristics in here that I think are universal. You know, you want transparency, you want authenticity, you want somebody who, I mean, somebody in some districts, they may want a more of a philosophical kind of a leader, but you want somebody who's hands on, that's what the people said. You know, they want somebody who's going to be visible, present, understand instruction. And then somebody who knows all the finance side of the house. But I think in while there's similarities woven throughout here, it I think it's unique to your community. I, you know, I thought, and I said this to so many of the groups that I interviewed, is I thought I knew San Francisco. I didn't know San Francisco. I learned so much more about San Francisco as a community and who you are and what you do and how you do it. And just the potential that lies there, the passion that lies in within, you know, I don't live that far from the city and and I go there quite often. But I learned so much more. So I think this is unique. Commissioner Bogus, you know, come back to you. While there are woven elements within it, these are very specific to your district, I would say. And Glenn, I'm not sure you want to add anything.
No, I have to agree with you entirely, Martha. For us, because we held those interviews or meetings with individuals and and organizations, we we do know the details of all of these. And we can give you those details. I think you've seen them in in other ways. But these four key skills, I think, really capture the essence of everything that the community is seeing.
No, I really appreciate that, Claire. And I think for me, part of it is, as I look at them and think about kind of our last set of superintendents, including like our interim superintendents, I feel like like they they would also kind of be people who who would fall under these four key leadership sets. And I think trying to figure out how do we get someone who's kind of better than everyone we've had before? And just so I just for me, it's just trying to figure out like, what in these processes do we have to kind of help merit people out and push things forward as we try to continue to kind of grow and keep getting better. But thank you so much for your response.
Student Delegate Lamb.
Thank you, Vice President Lamb. I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Sanchez have said so far. I think that these four different skill sets are super important, and I honestly don't know where I would want to put emphasis. I think they're all very important. I think as a student, I'm really focused on making sure that we have quality instruction and a quality education. And obviously, the social justice component is really important for our district. And I think because of what San Francisco is and how many relationships we we have, especially with a bunch of CBOs that make our schools run, an effective communicator is super important to this district. I I think one of the things that we can still be improving on in a district personally is communication. It's a big issue where we need to be making sure that we engage all of our stakeholders. And I would want a superintendent, the next superintendent, to be an effective communicator and an engaged manager, especially around our financial situation, for sure. And so I just wanted to throw it out there. I'm in support of these and we can get down into the like nitty gritty details. But as Vice President Lamb has been saying, I want to make sure that we get this through tonight. But those are my remarks. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll just chime in absolutely. Also agree with my colleagues that I think these four key leadership skill sets really matches up to, you know, and thank you to HYA and to all of our constituents, stakeholders, community who participated in the discussions, town halls, conversations, because I think it is a reflection of what came out of those conversations. You know, overall, absolutely, I think these are the four pillars. I do have some overall thoughts in each of the areas of and in Commissioner Maliga, leading with, you know, under the fiscal experience and engaged manager. I similarly had a question around, you know, is that prominent enough, given the language? And Martha, thank you for your clarification. So we might go through that as well, because I have, I think, for each of the skill sets, just some thoughts and 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 certainly, you know, they're minor, I would say, because the concept is overall right there. But, you know, there are some pieces that I'm curious to raise and bring forward for my colleagues for discussion. And if it would warrant, you know, just minor feedback as well. And certainly welcome HYA's engagement through this too, in their guidance. Okay, so with that, I raised my own hand. Let's go into maybe, and for reference, we do have the draft of the desired characteristics. Again, not towards Smith, but let's go into the first one, systems thinker with laser focus on instructional quality and results. Just opening it up to the floor if there are further discussions or dialogue you want to bring forward. Seeing none, I I do have one aspect. Go ahead, Commissioner Alexander.
Thanks. Are you are you going to put the slide up so people can see that one? Maybe, I don't know who's running the slides.
Deborah, for the.
Do you want me to move forward?
Because, yeah, I think we're talking about the the systems thinker one, right?
Okay.
I was gonna say, I I think this one, I like this one. I think it's really strong. I do think opportunity gap and achievement gap mean different things to folks in the education community. And I think opportunity gap would better represent our district in terms of the language usage. I don't not, again, not to to wordsmith, but I think it actually has a different kind of meaning among folks in the education world. Achievement gap is is sometimes by some people perceived to mean sort of more holding students responsible for their achievement, whereas opportunity gap makes very clear that it's about the system and the responsibility of the school system and educators to to close that gap. So again, to me, it doesn't, I understand what's meant by it, but I just, my only concern would be that it may communicate, it may not communicate what we're trying to communicate if we put achievement gap.
Thank you. Colleagues, any reactions, thoughts?
Yeah, if I may, I agree with Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Commissioner Collins on this aspect. Even if we just add opportunity to it, we can keep achievement, but we can add opportunity as well. So we could say closing achievement and opportunity gaps.
I would be in support of that as well. One thing about this section is I do want to also bring forward, you know, around, we have been through so much with the pandemic and the education recovery. That's, you know, we're just kind of embarking on that now, right? And and really what is needed around the accelerated learning, it's tied to our LCAP, it's going to be tied, it's tied to our education recovery plans through with the state of California. So there's just something there I I wanted to bring forward, like, you know, again, is that too much in the weeds? Is there acknowledgement, Martha? I'd like to get your reaction there because it doesn't necessarily explicitly talk about, you know, while closing the achievement and opportunity gaps is systemic and has been longstanding in like our district has decades in the making for our focal population. So just wanted to raise that forward as well.
Well, when you have, so we're looking for the next candidate that has a proven track record in closing the gap, whatever the gap is, whatever. And I I'm taking notes, so I'm hoping if this is an action item, that I'm adding the opportunity into that, into the wording to there. I would just say the proven track record is over time. We don't see trends in 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 changing academic records without a three to five year trend. So it's 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 over time. And so when we're looking for that proven track record, you're going to work looking for somebody who's seen that. It's not going to happen in a one or two year period. And I'm if I'm addressing your question, but I think that proven track record talks about the extension over time that we would be looking for someone who's done that. And then what are the system changes that needed to happen? And I I really appreciate the comment and the the definition around the opportunity gap, putting the accountability back on the system. Because that was true. That was very loud and clear. It's a systemic structures and practices that need to be either strengthened, eliminated, or looked at certainly and assessed to figure out how can we really move into closing that opportunity achievement gap? I'm not sure, Vice President Lamb, if I answered you, but.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, I mean, just for a sake of discussion, I mean, absolutely a track record of closing that. But I I also feel and 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 to my colleagues who are educators, please chime in here. But I'm curious, because, you know, with the education recovery that COVID is presenting to us, you know, I wonder, will it be new strategies or, you know, certainly we have our plans that we've submitted and but maybe that's part of, you know, is we bring in our candidates that will be also the, what we will hold both ourselves as a board. And I also want to acknowledge, you know, the profile report is also a call to action for our board as well as our superintendent. And and, you know, how we evaluate, you know, our superintendent superintendent around making that progress to those that laser focus of the academic and educational outcomes of our students. So like I said, I just wanted to bring that forward.
So when we get to the stage where we start creating the questions for the interview, I think that your point can be brought into a question there. As far as I understand, from what I understand, you're saying, we know that there's been an achievement gap the the in the past, where the low socioeconomic and then some ethnicities were separated with by a gap from higher achieving groups. But we have a new situation here, and this situation is coming out of the pandemic. Are there deficits now? And what are those gaps? So in the question that we create regarding this for the candidates, I think that needs to be captured. And we would work with you to do that.
I appreciate that, Glenn. I mean, just for example, both on this most social emotional side, you know, of supporting our students as they're, you know, living within the pandemic, but also our earliest learners, right? We don't, I don't think have even understood, quite frankly, yet what the impact is for our earliest learners who, you know, that we're seeing some early research around speech delayed, you know, for for against, I call them the littles, the youngest learners. So that's just an example. So I really appreciate that because I do think there are some, quote, uniqueness as we are continuing to live through this pandemic. And what does that mean for our educational practices and and the supports that are going to be necessary too for our educators ongoing? Thank you, colleagues. And please, I'm trying to navigate a couple of screens. So if I don't see you.
So what I captured, the change and the input to on this one, so before we move to the next slide. So when you go to your action item, you'll know that I captured of including the word opportunities. So it reads, has a proven record of closing the opportunity and achievement gaps for students of other words followed. So that I heard.
No, I think we're on the wrong slide. We need to go back one. Thank you.
So on that second bullet, I added after closing opportunity and and then the rest stayed the same. That's what I heard.
Seeing no objection. So yes, Martha. All right, let's move into our next area, our second area around social justice. Passionate champion for social justice. Colleagues, any additional comments? Or edits?
Just the, if you read it, grammatically, I'm wondering that first bullet, in creating and implementing an equitable and inclusive approaches.
The English teacher got us.
Should it be just implementing equitable and inclusive? Should it be just implementing equitable and inclusive without the word and?
Read it to me, I would like it just Commissioner Sanchez.
Okay. It's a long sentence, but deeply understands and she's related to DI and has a track record of making significant progress in creating and implementing and include equitable and inclusive approaches, that's it should, I think we should omit the word and.
Ah, that was the end, I was looking, okay, so I'll omit that.
Yeah.
Got it.
That's not substitute.
We don't want bad grammar in our. I agree.
Commissioner Bogus. Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez for that edit.
I was just gonna offer up on the second bullet point where it talks about addressing elements of institutional racism, I don't know, it feels like it would also be worthwhile to include other forms of like institutional oppression to just, I don't know if there's like a catch all phrase that makes sense to like be added to like with an and to racism, but just to kind of to be aware that there's more than just institutional racism that like folks in the are dealing with and just kind of capture it some way like that without removing institutional racism.
Commissioner Bogus, would you recommend elements of institutional?
Racism and other forms of prejudice.
Colleagues, any reactions?
It's fine to me.
Yeah, I agree, especially with some of the issues around sexual harassment and other forms of discrimination against LGBTQ students and families in some cases, so I think which, you know, we obviously are committed to, I think it's important to say it.
Thank you, I agree as well, I don't see any comments, I one thing I did want to raise about you know, the linguistic diversity of our community, and I don't know that because that is, you know, something that is so critical for our community that's come up throughout the stakeholder meetings. We're having a translation resolution interpretation, you know, policy that we're moving forward as well, and this this the district invests, you know, over a million dollars right now and in continuing to build that more linguistically responsive approach in engaging with our families and our students. So I don't know, again, I don't want to take up too much time in wordsmithing. If it would be adding a bullet or adding then.
It could be added in the third bullet.
And I would also maybe offer, if you don't mind, a vice president, maybe where it says each community also maybe having a list of our focal communities or something that we would want to kind of lift up the ones that are kind of most urgent to us as well, as kind of our broader communities.
In the last, Commissioner Bogus, in that last bullet.
Yeah, really, to just kind of expand out the community piece with maybe like just kind of adding a little list of targeted communities that we want to highlight that are of high interest to us.
I would just caution, since we put all and each in there. That you, you know, you don't, if we think we leave one, if this was, and it came up on Tuesday. It was so evident to us that each group felt very passionate about their needs, and I would just caution you, just, you know, that you want to make sure you wouldn't leave anybody out of that when you start listing. You know, the word all and each would be inclusive of everybody. And again, and so what I've captured here on the second bullet was right after the word institutional racism and other forms of prejudice in organizational policies and practice that we added and other forms of prejudices, and then I'm I'm trying to understand on the last bullet. These, I heard you, Commissioner Bogus, but I would just caution you on changing that language, and it's up to you, but again. You wanted, Vice President, to add the word linguistic to understand the linguistic needs and issue, I'm not sure where that would fit.
Yeah, I mean, some something that I had, you know, wanted to just be explicit because we talk about diverse communities, but oftentimes diverse is, you know, seen often, you know, by race and ethnicity, and I just really want to be able to name that it is also linguistic because we, and you probably, you know, from the stakeholder meetings, right, about the importance of language and that cultural acknowledgement too, so. Martha, I don't know if you have a recommendation there. Because I have a whole bullet, but I don't know if that's.
What I'm struggling and Glenn, I help me here if you're if or any of the commissioners, please help me here. When I insert the word linguistic, then it feels like I need to add something else.
What if?
Because.
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, you could, I think the two approaches would be to do what Commissioner Bogus was suggesting and say after community because I including and then have a list, right? Or you could say something like in each community. Understand the needs and issues in each community, including linguistic and cultural.
Yes.
Needs. Or something in which case you're you're addressing things that are culturally unique, things that are linguistically unique and and not making a list.
Commissioner Alexander, I actually, that's my bullet was both culturally and linguistically without naming each focal because I do think it is important, and I'll talk a little bit more about later on in the other attributes is a superintendent that is going to be looking at unifying our communities, that's really important, that was a key thread I feel like also came out of the stakeholder meetings. Martha, does that give you some direction there?
Yeah, we added, so was everybody okay with the second bullet with adding other forms of prejudices, and then I thank you, Commissioner, I think it was Alexander, who said after the last word on the third bullet, which is community, including linguistic and. Okay, yeah, and so those would be the additions to that, this slide.
I don't see any objections.
Oh, and striking the end of the first bullet.
Thank you. Teamwork, Commissioner Alexander, thank you. All right, I think I will close, we will close this for the second and move to the third leadership skill set, please. An effective communicator and relationship builder. Colleagues, thank you, Commissioner Lopez, President Lopez.
I haven't shared, but I did want to note so far the changes that my colleagues have added, I'm in full support of. This is an area that I I feel is most important to me, specifically the wording in the first bullet, tremendous potential of having the district, city and county who all serve the same student populations, so I I think the our next superintendent really needs to understand the effects of outside institutions, outside systems that end up impacting learning if a student's needs aren't met. And the tremendous importance of having these partnerships with city institutions that do have the expertise to meet those needs. And I I think I've emphasized this a number of times, but I think specifically just in a student's day, their ability to get to and from school safely through transportation, their access to healthcare, their access to healthy foods, a number of areas that as a school district, we don't really hold. But as a society, we understand these needs have to be met in order for learning to to really fully track, so I just want to really emphasize and hone in on the importance of that partnership across the city, and I think some folks have already said it, even with our neighborhood institutions, community based organizations who again have expertise in areas that we might not and need us to be able to partner directly and fully with them to best serve the same student populations and communities as is worded here, so I just wanted to note that.
President Lopez, do you have, are you comfortable with the language thus far, and then making sure as we go into interview questions? Being able to be even more explicit, do you feel like the first bullet captures the essence of what you have, what you just raised?
That's right, thank you for clarifying, I do agree.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bogus.
Yeah, thank you, I was gonna just say, I think part 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 of for me, and maybe this is under a category, but it's how do you support the institution to be effective at communicating and building relationships in addition to just doing it yourself, and so so maybe that is kind of under another one or not, but I just feel that a lot of these things are also the work of like staff people that the superintendent like directly supervises and manages, or at least is, you know, like their day to day job as well as their responsibility and like, how do you convey or get your staff to also kind of, you know, mimic these skills and traits that we're kind of having, and and so I guess some way to to capture that, I don't I don't have a language for it, but just wanted to highlight that concern.
Commissioner Bogus, I'll just respond to you on that one, the last bullet. Develop a comprehensive community strategy for all stakeholders, that would be involving especially those who are messaging this out. So I think embedded in what your comment was right now is the essence of kind of this bullet. You would have a communication plan, what, I'll just use this as an example, when there's a crisis going on, you know, the day of the pandemic, the day that they closed schools, the day that you know, you gather your entire leadership team together, all your important stakeholders, and you have talking points for them so that everybody is getting that same message out, right, so somewhere in that communication plan, there's probably, you know, how how communication flows up and down, but it's across, and how do you create messages that create a consistent delivery step, that's that's embedded in this, so what I just stated was like way down in the weeds, right? So that statement down here is 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 capturing that communication strategy, what's it going to look like for you?
But Commissioner Bogus, I do think that is worth noting around the not only on the external, but the internal. That's my sense of your comments and certainly our discussions since you've been serving on the board, so I think Martha and Glenn, something to note that that's absolutely not only from Commissioner Bogus, but many of us on the board. And then certainly, it's not about, you know, there's the pandemic has certainly challenged districts all across the country with communication and what that means, you know, to all of our stakeholders and constituents both inside and outside. Commissioner Alexander.
Thanks, yeah, so I this is sort of related, but maybe a little distinct. Um, I noticed that shared decision making was included in the second bullet, union partners. I think it maybe should also go in the fourth bullet for all stakeholders. So I guess my suggestion might be to say to on the last bullet, deploy is a comprehensive communication and shared decision making strategy for all stakeholders, because I think it's just as it is important to engage our union partners and share decision making. So too is it important to engage our parents and families and students, and I think that's something I've heard a lot this year from families, just to use one example, the decision about the start changing start times to schools. What I heard from parents was, well, there was, there was a lack of communication, but there also was a lack of sort of shared decision making in terms of being able to give input and make adjustments before that decision was made. And so I think that's something that that I've heard from a lot of stakeholders and would think might be worth emphasizing, I don't know what my colleagues think there.
Can you just restate how you'd like to put in words there?
Yeah, so maybe I would say on the last bullet, deploy is a comprehensive communication and shared decision making strategy for all stakeholders, focus on transparency, engagement, honesty. So just adding shared decision making in that bullet, just just as it is, because it's already in the one about the unions, but sort of adding it to the to the all stakeholders.
I do have a question related to that, and this is open to my colleagues, you know, as well as to Martha and Glenn. Certainly, of course, like we are San Francisco, right, how important it is to have that shared engagement, decision making with stakeholders, and I just wanted to ask, like, you know, there are times where there has to be also executive decisions that are made. And just, you know, how do we balance that? Because of course bell schedules, I also agree, like, yes, we need to do it, but the way, you know, that the impact that it had on families, so is there a distinction, right, that there is, and as a former executive director, that was also of a community based organization, absolutely, something that was critical, and there's business of the organization, the institution that also needs to be made as well, so I don't know, that's just something I am grappling with too. But absolutely see that value. Commissioner Malaga, I don't know if you have a reaction to that or something separate.
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to echo Commissioner Alexander's comments around the parent piece. If that's part of the all stakeholders bullet point, then maybe there's a way we can make it pop. So that um, so that it's in there in language, so that's it.
I also agree, because I noticed we don't explicitly, we name CBOs, we name our labor partners, but our our parents and our families are also the core and our students are core to, you know, our stakeholders, so. I would also recommend if we could maybe not fourth bullet, I don't know. Martha, do you feel that?
Well, I'm struggling because one of, you know, the communication strategy is really based around transparency, engagement and honesty now. I have seen communication plans that include a decision making model in it. So when to stick in the shared decision making strategy, you know, right before that strategy, so put communication and a decision shared decision making strategy, it changes the essence of this, I mean, to me, it changes some of it with the transparency, engagement and honesty piece, which is totally tied to how we communicate to your stakeholders, so. I don't know, Glenn, do you have any way, and I'm almost thinking maybe it's in the second bullet that you just want to change the union partners, you put union partners and.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say too, that would be an alternative, like, put the put other stakeholders in the second bullet.
Yeah, because then that keeps that your decision making.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying, that that makes sense too, so, yes.
I'm gonna stick it in there.
If I don't see any objections from colleagues, that's great, thank you.
Okay.
And then Martha, following up on both Commissioner Malaga and I raising, you know, how do we or do we explicitly name our stakeholders of families and parents and families?
Back on the other slide, the previous slide?
No, on this effective communication, or do you feel like that is because we say for all stakeholders?
I you, I mean, I think it would be appropriate if you want to add internal and external stakeholders there, you could, but I, you know, when we say all, we mean all. Because San Francisco Unified School District is within the city, and we've talked a lot about, and you see that interwoven throughout this, that there has to be, there has to be, hopefully, the next leader can can develop a culture of interdependence that is truly looked at as two partnerships throughout all the different levels that you serve, but if you're speaking specifically to parents, you might, you know, we could put, we could add the words internal and external on the last bullet, where it says a communication strategy for all internal and external stakeholders, is that what you're thinking, or you're just thinking specifically internal?
Question. Um, I'll open it to my colleagues as I mull over that. Commissioner Malika, I see your hand up. I don't know if that's from previous or Commissioner Bogus too.
No, I'll jump in the comment. I think for me, even though all does mean all, I feel like for us, it's so important that we lift up certain segments that have historically been left out because it's kind of, I feel like almost a value statement for us. And I feel like if the person coming in thinks that all stakeholders doesn't kind of put our, our families at the front. I mean, I don't want to prioritize, but I think that that would be, that would be kind of a misunderstanding of what, what they're getting to. And I guess I, I also feel like a desire to, to lift up, up families in, in this moment as we, we kind of embark on this search.
So it's a suggestion that we would add staff, parents, students. Those are the words that, you know, usually come up when you start naming, um, your internal stakeholder groups. Staff would be inclusive of everybody, so I don't have to name administrators, teachers and all those other support stuff. You could just say staff, students and families.
Colleagues, reactions?
I'm fine with that. Staff, students and family.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that as well. I, I would even be okay with all stakeholders, especially families.
Oh, that, because I, as I'm typing this, I'm thinking, so where do the, because, because community-based organizations are so integral to the day-to-day work, you know, throughout your district. You know, so you start naming groups and I start thinking, oh my God, I left off somebody. So maybe do you want to put that, all stakeholders, especially families with that?
I do.
Commissioners, I haven't heard from Commissioner Alexander.
Uh, yeah, that sounds good to me. I had a, I had a different question whenever we're ready to go on. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, and then we'll go back to solidifying that language. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was gonna ask about a third bullet, and I don't, this may be a question for Commissioner Bogus or others um, who are even, uh, maybe greater experts on community schools. Is it worth mentioning community schools there? Because I think, um, I guess, or is that maybe that is the, the way of doing that? Maybe this is the 10,000-foot level, just because I think, um, I think it's important for the new superintendent to understand that it's, we're talking about integrated partnerships on the ground level at schools. We're not talking about, we are, we do have, the, the first bullet is more about the sort of big picture partnerships, I think. And then the, the third bullet is about how does that get operationalized on the ground at the school level? So I'm not sure if whether it needs to be called out explicitly. That's a community school strategy, but I think that's something that we've talked about a lot on the board, I know. So I just wanted to raise that.
Any thoughts there? I'll just say for, for me, I, I really like that distinction around the integration of the partnerships. And I, you know, maybe it's not, has to be wordsmith here, but, um, and for the community school models, you know, I, uh, the value and the principles of it, it certainly, I think, is aligned. And I wonder, you know, if that's something we can also integrate in as we're going, advancing into the process, um, the interviewing process.
So the essence of that third bullet is really what we heard over and over and over again. If you look at the report, you'll see wellness centers, you'll see community schools embedded throughout, you know, your comments. But this particular bullet is really talking about how can you enhance the partnerships that you have currently? Some are working, some are not, you know, how can you expand on those and look at other resources that may be available within you? So, um, I think, you know, when, when folks read, um, the, the report as a whole, they'll find those other, you know, bullets and themes woven in there. We heard over and over again, you should be champions of those, um, community schools and the wellness centers. You should be showcasing those throughout the nation, if not, certainly in the state. So that's interwoven in that report. This is really getting down to the essence of how those partnerships can really be enhanced and expanded. So I would just recommend that you leave it. It's, and this particular bullet, Glenn, I'm sure you, we heard all, every, yeah, so.
Yeah, that, that makes, that ma, that makes sense, for sure.
Okay, Commissioner Alexander. So going back to, um, the fourth bullet of specifically naming, especially families.
Excuse me, Vice President, let me tell you what I caught, and then.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so second bullet, um, we were going to add after union partners. We were gonna add and all stakeholders, so that would capture what we had talked a lot about. But we were gonna try to stick it in that last bullet. So that second bullet would read, the collaborative working relationships with union partners and all stakeholders through the honest, okay? Fourth bullet, um, was on the communication strategy for all stakeholders, especially families. So especially families has been added to that fourth bullet, um, and all stakeholders on the second bullet.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, colleagues, I'm going to close for this third leadership skill set. And we will move into our fourth one. Engage manager. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yeah, thank you. I would just add, I think it was mentioned earlier, where it says state and federal levels in that first bullet, just add local.
I agree with that too.
Agree, thank you. Any other comments? I had one. Um, I know that Vision 2025 is our current guiding post of our strategic plan, but we're gonna blink and it's gonna be 2025. So I wanted to add or acknowledge that, yes, the next superintendent, you know, will come in and grounded in Vision 2025, but it's also like getting ready for beyond. So, um, I don't know, colleagues, I'll just put that forward for consideration or just dialogue.
Do you have a sense that you want to add that language in that bullet?
It would be the second bullet.
Yeah.
Results focused appointment plan for Vision 2025 and beyond.
And beyond.
Okay.
So it's kind of like gear up superintendent and board. Um, I think I saw student delegate Lamb, but I think she might have put her hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we could just add it as beyond, because I think that's super important too, that we're looking past Vision 2025 as well.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bogus?
Thank you so much. I, I think also for that bullet, something about doing so in like a community-led process. I know we kind of hit on those in the last bullet slides, but I, I, I would hate for the person who is applying to read this and think that we're asking them to come in and to do this in isolation and not in community with everybody else, if that makes sense. Like, they're gonna be leading a process of transformation, redesigning, not coming in and redesigning and creating in isolation. And so I guess just to, to, I guess, I just wanted to note that.
Colleagues, any reactions?
Are you seeing more their ability to build on what we've been working on and not come in thinking they will redesign an entire system to help our district?
Less about what we've already done and just more about like, uh, committed to like a shared process to develop things. I think we've, we've kind of caught it in other areas, but I think just also having it, it here. I guess what I'm worried about is, I'm worried about us getting a superintendent who is gonna come in and try to kind of have a my way or the highway approach to our situations and problems versus someone who's gonna come in and say, the best idea is the one that we build together. And so I guess just to kind of like highlight that.
I'll just, I'm gonna lead us back to what Glenn has, had spoken to again. The how-to you get this done is, is an opportunity that you get to ask in those interview questions. So if this was translated into a interview question, you know, we heard through our stakeholders that there needs to be, um, an assessment and a redesign of, um, leadership structures and that there needs to be some strategic plan written around this, and we have a current plan, how would that happen? And so if they don't say, you know, there's, oh, I've got the plan up here, I've got it ready to go, rather than saying, well, you know, that's a very deep and bold process that needs to involve many levels of the organization. We need to hear the voices, you know, we look, that's, then I think you have that opportunity to do that in the interview, to get down to that level.
Yeah, I agree with that. This should be the what? What is, you know, what is the concept? And then the how we can, uh, ferret out through a question.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Um, that, talk about another bullet.
Okay.
Are we done with the last one?
Commissioner Bogus, are you comfortable making sure that we hold that as we go through the process?
I do not feel the need to force the issue. Yeah, so I'm down for us to kind of keep it as it.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you. So the last one I like a lot, I would just like to add something that, you know, kind of the elephant in the room is that we, we can't support our staff enough because we can't adequately compensate them. So maybe adding works to attract, support, adequately compensate and retain. I mean, knowing that that's a big lift, but we, we know that we're not able to, um, do that at the moment. We're losing lots of people because of finances, but, um, it would be aspirational for sure. I don't know what others feel about that.
I, um, agree. I, I actually had a couple other proposed edits for this slide that I've deciding not to propose after listening to what Glenn and Martha said about the what and the how. So, um, so I think they more went into the how, but I think this is like a what question of, and it relates to budget. Yeah, I think there's a structural, we have a structural problem that's actually about, and it's related, I think, to the first and second bullet. Which is how we compensate our staff at all levels of the organization, as the last bullet says. Uh, that, that people, it, it's not as bad for the top-level management, folks are getting paid well. But for, for the educators that work at schools, and in particular teachers and para-educators who make even less, people can't, can't afford to live here, and so we, we invest in them. So like these retention strategies that are about, you know, professional development and creating a great environment, none of that works if, um, if people can't afford, um, to remain in the Bay Area. And I've, I experienced that a lot as a principal training and supporting. Uh, I think we did a really good job of supporting new teachers. They got good. They said they wanted to stay at our school, but then they moved away because they could never see themselves moving out of a one-bedroom apartment. Um, and so they moved to Colorado where they buy a house. So those, those stories, I just think are over, happen over and over again. And I think I agree with Commissioner Sanchez that it would be worth at least noting it somewhere.
I think I, I have a perspective around, certainly compensation is key. We know that that is a key to retain, you're right, to both attract and, and retain our, our educators and staff. I just wonder though, because of our current fiscal situation and the sustainability, you know, I also want to be mindful of that. Um, and certainly I think whoever comes in as a superintendent will need to work at the local and state and federal levels because that's a structural issue. But, so I don't know if that's also a piece that we can also, um, lift into um, as we go through the hiring process. I don't know, that's just a thought there.
Embedded in the phrase, uh, works to attract are embedded a lot of the ideas that you have. You can have bonuses, you can have stipends, you can have other things embedded and not attraction kind of pieces that supports the organization. So I, I, you know, put that down is, is really bold, to say the least. Um, also, I think in here, um, that advocates for the needs, and the first bullet, for the needs of the local, at local levels and embedded throughout, and I was kind of flipping back, um, even though, because this theme came out about the cost, the high cost of living, right? And, um, the shortage of staff and that, you see that throughout your comments, you, they're just, it's, it's stark and it's there. And, but it's also, um, we also heard that there was a tremendous, a potential that with working with the city to develop teacher housing, to, you know, do these other kinds of opportunities that may exist out there. So to call it out, that attracting, you would have to work within the fiscal plan. Um, and your, your constraints or your, you know, what that's gonna look like. So I would just caution you on pushing it in.
I have a thought. What if, um, I, I think part of what we're all talking about is increasing revenue? What if we divided the first bullet into two and made the advocating a separate bullet? To really push for, do you see what I'm saying? Like to really emphasize the advocating? Because I think there, I think the first bullet includes two different things. It's understanding the educational finance and developing a plan, given our current constraints, right? We need someone who can actually look at our current budget, say, here's a plan. And as a separate but related project, we need someone who can really advocate for federal, state and local funding so that we can compensate people, so that we can increase our workforce, all those things, which is, uh, which is dependent upon additional funding, right? So we're making clear that, I, I just feel like that's a big priority, because we're never gonna, like everyone's saying. We, we can talk about compensation, but it's meaningless if we don't have new revenue sources, because we can't afford to increase compensation.
Commissioner Alexander, I really appreciate that, because it's pretty also in alignment with what we've been talking about in the policy committee, right? For about a year, about over a year since you've served, um, served on the board is, you know, how do we develop that proactive agenda? And I think we have some momentum. I, I am always hopeful, right? Optimistic around that, so.
So what I, um, excuse me, um, Vice President Lamb, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Okay, so, um, I see the time is, we were allocating in there, we're going into two. So, um, I, this is what I have. I love that suggestion, Commissioner Alexander. So I struck out and after SFUSD on the first bullet, made a new bullet advocates for SFUSD's fiscal needs at the local and state and federal levels. Is that free, everybody? And then on the third bullet, I added the and beyond at the end, and I think, I think we got it.
Commissioner Alexander, that captures.
Commissioner Sanchez, do you think that's good, or do you, would you want to add something?
I think, yeah, I'd like to be more specific, but I'm fine. I mean.
I mean, we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, we all know that we can't support our staff, especially the folks at the ground level with, with what we're compensating. That's the main reason for, uh, folks leaving our district.
And I, I think the, and maybe the point, Martha, also is just to, to sort of acknowledge that we don't have adequate funding to yet to do what we want to, what we really need and want to do. Because we also, I think, want to make that clear that we're not, that we're calibrating expectations with what we, there's what we can do now. And then there's, we want a superintendent, not who can weigh the magic wand, but who can work with all of us to make a plan to increase those revenues.
That is that, so we separated the first bullet, struck out the and, started with advocates for San Francisco Unified School District's fiscal needs at the local, state and federal levels. And then the other addition on the third bullet was right after Vision 25 and beyond.
Time to go to me.
Great. Thank you. And Martha, um, you thought this meeting is going to be an hour? You, you haven't worked with us long enough to know that, you know, under two hours is trying to keep us tight already.
We'll be done by, by one. We'll be done by 1:00 AM at the latest.
Talk about aspiration.
My other role is that I'm co-executive director for the California Association of Latino Superintendents. And we have our conferences start registration tonight. So when Hank called me, I originally had told him I wasn't sure I was gonna make this meeting, but with the family emergency, I told him I would do it. And Glenn was gracious to say yes, because he just came in from out of the country, too. So, yeah, we make it happen when we have to, so we're good.
So colleagues, thank you so much for this work. I think we are landing to our final document of our attributes that are needed. Commissioner Lopez, go ahead.
Just wanna be clear, after, like, once we finalize this, letting folks know the next steps and what other direction is needed.
Yes, so I'm actually gonna take, just because we got through a lot of work and we were concise tonight, I will take, ask for a motion and to do a roll call vote to formally adopt these attributes. And then before we go into closing, I will have HIA finish up with the search process and going through the timeline. How does that sound for next steps? Okay, wonderful, so. Thank you. There's a second, okay. Deborah, can you please take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, I can. Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Vice President Lamb? Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
He had to step away.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
Right, so we have adopted our superintendent attributes, thank you. And so I will now turn over to HIA to walk us through what the search process looks like moving forward.
You know what, Glenn, can you go ahead and start? I'm trying, oh, here we go.
I'll do it, I'll do it. So if you can move to the next slide.
I was trying to save all the changes and trying to get that lined up, so, thank you.
So you can see that we are at the engage stage, and we're just completing that, where we got the information from the communities. And now we move toward the recruitment stage. I can say and share that we do have applicants already. But now that we have our desired characteristics, we will actively go out and recruit more candidates that we believe might fit that mold and give us more options of candidates to share with you. And then we get to the select phase where we, we go into the actual what, screening app and interviewing process. And then the transition would be, once you've selected the next leader, to help with that transition of that person coming in. Okay, if we move to the next slide.
So the only thing I would add, just in the engage and the recruitment stage, they overlap. So while we began this process in early December with engaging, you know, setting up all the interview processes and getting that off and running, and that ended, I think, our last engagement meeting was on January 19. The application process was open. It had already begun in December. It's still open until, you know, the 18th of February. And so that has, you know, those two stages overlapped, and I'll let Glenn go ahead and go change the stage.
So then going on, this next slide, a couple of slides we have will break down further what actually happens at each stage. So January to late February is the recruitment phase. And that's where we'll go out and try to find more candidates, as I indicated to you, and see which ones we might recommend. And we'll have to talk about that process when we get to the next stage. Late February is where commissioners will review the applications and determine which candidates to bring forth for the initial interviews. Early March is also in the selection phase. This is where the initial interviews will take place, and commissioners will narrow the field of candidates to the semifinalists. Late March is final part of the selection phase where we bring the semifinalists back for a second interview.
Can I just pause just for a second on the late February stage? So where we're at right now is we have candidates actively applying for the, for the position. We have, I don't know, but I saw it. I don't know if you received it yet, and if you haven't, you will produce soon. You have passwords that you're gonna be given to get into the portal, so you'll be able to see applicants and all of the information that comes along with that. But beyond that, those applicants that are actually directly applying to HIA portal, there is, we have a list, and we'll be meeting on Monday. So we'll be looking at all of these names that have come out through our interview process, names of people that have been contacting us informally. So there's, there's two, two recruitments that go on simultaneously, right? You are actively recruiting with people that you know would fit, would be a fit for the district. There are people actively applying, and once, you know, they, there are people calling us, asking questions, we're encouraging them if we think they're a match. And so that also is happening kind of in the backend, but in the frontend, you'll see it on the portal.
And community members that we interviewed and groups did bring forth names for us to, to follow up on.
In fact, some of those names, we've already contacted, and some of them said, take me off the list. But we, we have, we have a whole spreadsheet of other names that have come up, so. Just wanted you to know that. There's, there's, there's multiple layers to the recruitment phase. So we'll go to the last slide.
Why don't you go ahead and finish up, Martha?
Oh, okay. So let's see, you've done your initial screening, so what, and the other thing that you probably need to know. So I told you, we have a spreadsheet of individuals. We're looking at those applicants that are coming in through the portal. We are already starting to do what we call informal reference checks, talking to the individuals, making sure that they're a match. So when we get to the initial interviews, we're narrowing those down, all of that's already kind of happening. We're looking through those desired characteristics, making sure they're a match for you. And you then will invite those folks to the table. That's your, that's your space. We take a back row seat on that. You're leading that interview process. We're helping you developing. We got it all down. We do the schedules and all of that stuff. But, and helping you develop the questions, even based on some of your comments that were tonight, but certainly based on some of those challenges that you saw in that leadership profile report. We want to make sure we're capturing that enough so that in your interview process, you're seeing if these individuals are really gonna be the solution makers, you know, the people that can really bring the district to the next level. So that's, you know, your work. We're in the background supporting you, helping you develop all that. And you'll get, you know, copies of, okay, here's what you gotta do. Here's the, you know, guidelines for the interview questions and all of that other stuff. But, so you'll select your preferred candidates. And then by that time, and we've talked about this in our planning sessions and in other meetings, about really going deep into the due diligence of reference checking at that particular point, beginning the contract negotiations, and then landing some dates when we would do a public announcement. And then from there, it's, the end of April is Ben, June, and they're gonna be here, you know? So July 1st, they'll begin. So that's kind of the way it, you know, rolls. If you have any more details that you'd like to know about that, we certainly are here to answer those.
Thank you so much to Martha and Glenn. Please send our regards to Hank as well, our good thoughts to him and his family. So colleagues, this concludes our business.
Good question.
Yes, go ahead.
I just, can you go back one slide? For the, I just want to know about just a process question, that the applicants have, have to have a complete application. So in that process, what's the deadline for them to have their entire application completed?
Sorry, now that we have the desired characteristics, we will be looking and guiding them. If we've seen that they're very viable candidates, and just saying, you know, you need to craft your, your paperwork, basically, to really highlight some of these areas that we feel are very strong in that. The completion date is February 18th, that's what we.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would include cover letters, the application itself, the three letters of recommendation, any other supporting documents. Some, some candidates will have all their credentials, you know, in the portal. All those, all of those reference materials, you can have up to 12 documents, you know, on there. So they'll, depending on the candidate, they'll just, oh, the resume is also in there. So all of those will be supporting documents you'll have access to, to view through the portal.
Thank you.
So this concludes our special meeting, January 27th, and our superintendent search and the desired characteristics. So thank you all. I like to formally adjourn. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Vice President Lamb?
Thank you.
Everybody.
And thank you, commissioners, for your thoughtful feedback. We really appreciate it. Next steps will be, I'll be emailing the corrected slide deck to Judson. And then, and he'll get it out to you guys. I don't know what Judson does with it when he gets it, but he'll get it to you. And then we'll see President Lopez and Vice President Lamb. We'll see you at the leadership meeting next Wednesday.
Yeah.
If all goes well, right.